I will read the article, then someone must first put it on the floor, and then somebody else must second it. Then discussions can start. Anyone acting improperly will be asked to leave. Amendment must be read, and then submitted in writing, and must be seconded. Request for a paper ballot must be presented in writing, and there will have to be three signatures of voters. And if request for a -- in the town of Dorchester, they may not vote. Only registered voters in the town of Dorchester may vote.
Could you ask who is a non-resident from these things?
You want to know who's a non-voter? Yeah, who's a non-voter? Okay. It's only one. Yeah, okay. Winners will please stay after, right after the meeting to take the votes of ours. Okay. I will read the results of Tuesday, March 9th, 2:10, on Article 1. 139 voters voted. For selectmen, Sherman Hallock, 75; Cookie Herbert, 56; moderator, Josh Trot, 86; David Morrow, 37; Town Treasurer, Brian Howe, 118. Nobody else rang. Tax vendor, Brenda Howe, 120; Town Clerk, 117, Brenda Howe. Trustees of the trust funds, we had 16 write-ins, and I'll give it to the selectmen, and they can try and get someone to serve on that. Trustees of the trust funds, Cookie Herbert, 3; Audit of one year, Michael, 116; Yvonne Yetman, 16; Cemetery trustee, Livers Trot, 114; Cemetery trustee for two years, Betham Wick, 109; Planning Board, Patricia Franz, 89; William Trot, 96; Planning Board for one year, John Morrissey, 15; Supervisor of the checklist, Karen Yetman, 116; Supervisor of the checklist for four years, Michelle Davis, 114. Do you want that? Yeah. Okay.
Can we add the trustee of the trust fund? The trustee of the trust fund for three years with the multiple write-ins. There were a number of candidates that had an equal vote with the highest number of votes. They were all contacted individually. They responded by emails. Everyone declined the position except for one candidate, and that was Linda Halleck. So she would be designated the trustee of the trust fund for two years.
Article 2, see if the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the
Mr. Moderator, may I point you to order, please? Generally, in a warrants, we have an indication of whether these are recommended by the selectmen or come by petition. That is omitted on this list of warrant articles.
It's written right here.
For that one, but not for the others. I think at this point, if we could have the warrants corrected, so for example, 5, 7, 8 are not -- don't say where they're coming from. So I'd like to know if these are recommended by the selectmen or whether they're here by petition.
Would you like to give a response, Nick? We are only required to put on -- we are required to put on if it's by petition. We are required to put on whether it's recommended if it involves money. DRA removed the recommendations because those particular articles did not deal with money issues. So if it doesn't say petitions, it was put on by the selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, that's great.
Can we add to that? Can I add to that one? The town cat at the next town meeting, by petition article or by the selectman, you can't put in articles requiring the select board to make their recommendations on each article, but it's not required, as Linda said. But it has to be done by a warrant article of the town. It could also be individualized, and each selectman has to individually place his recommendation yes or no. But that's by warrant article, and that we don't have right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't you feel happy?
Yes, it's my question. Thank you, sir.
Okay. See if the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 3501 for the purpose of acquiring and developing land for a town cemetery and to raise appropriate sum of $1,000 to be placed in this fund, recommended by the selectmen. Anybody want to put on them?
Do you have a motion?
Do you have to make the motion? Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion and a second.
I make the motion?
Yeah. A second. Okay. I will read it again, and then the discussions will be on it. All right? I think I'm doing right.
Yeah, you're doing good.
It's been a while, and I'm getting seated, I too.
You're doing good, Hank.
See if the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 3501 for the purpose of acquiring and developing for a town cemetery and to raise appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be placed in this fund.
I'd just like to solicit some discussion on this, as well as on any of those money articles. We all sat down, we did our budget this year, for those of you who have gone through the town report and looked at it and scrutinized it and whatever. We affected a tax decrease for the town in this year's budget of about 1.22 percent. We actually reduced the budget by $5,337 over last year because of other factors and forces that may be coming down the pipe, which could be a little devastating on tax rates in the future. This is strictly a call for this meeting if you want to add the money or if you do not want to add the money. But if we take petition articles and we add this to our budget, we will probably not have a tax decrease, we're completely level funded.
I'd like to speak to this article. I've been on the cemetery committee now for several years, and as some of you know, we have some major problems with the current cemetery in terms of water drainage and the way it was originally set up. There are major rocks in it. It makes for some difficulties when we actually come to burials. But more than that, as the town turns over people and people would like to be buried here, we're going to run out of plots. Now, we have, over the last few years, and with the help of selectmen, been putting out feelers to see if we could get some donations of land that we then have to spend money on to make sure that they were prepared correctly, because the state now has regulations on how to do that. But we need to start with land. We have not had any positive responses to that, and I think it just makes good sense for the town to begin now. Once this fund is established, the thousand, and if we could put a thousand in, we also then have a fund that some people might choose in lieu of donating land to provide us with some money. It would be a place for the purchase of the cemetery itself, land, not to maintain the cemeteries. And so I would speak in favor of this. I think that it's a conservative approach to beginning to get us prepared for the reality that we will need a new cemetery at some point, and we will probably have to buy it.
Any more discussion? No more discussion, we'll move the questions. All in favor? I'm going to read it again. I think I'm supposed to do that. See if the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 3501 for the purpose of acquiring and developing land for a town cemetery and to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be placed in the fund. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article passes. Article 3, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of $2,000 for the purpose of removing those trees which could potentially damage the town hall and the museum and to fund this appropriation by authorization of the withdrawer of $2,000 from the building maintenance capital reserve fund created in 1984. Anybody want to -- oh, anybody move it?
You accept a motion.
37. All right, so open for discussion.
You have a background on the article, seems to indicate that the sale of the timber would probably result in reimbursement of that money to the fund.
Yes.
Blackman, the back will explain this part of this.
We -- this started probably about two years ago. It originated around the museum, and with clearing out some trees from the museum because our museum is rotting, it's falling apart. The idea came with cutting some trees back, I cut some shrubs back and all that, but then our ventures took us to the cemetery, where our people taking care of the cemetery. We have two trees, one of them's laying there now, we have trees around it that may probably damage our stones in there, we don't want that to happen. As we move further, as time developed, we were in the process of trying to, through funds, through Homeland Security, matching funds, place a propane generator for an interruptible service to this building with electric, and this building will serve as our shelter in place of a storm. By doing that, we would like to remove some of the trees that may cause a problem for us as installing the generator back, and open it up, some of the area to the cemetery. In the course of reviewing that, it came into light, we expanded it, it came into light these two trees in the parking area. It was around that time when we had, if you can remember, we all kind of ran for shelter a little bit, because we thought a tornado was coming through, and it was all home days, and kind of what if those trees come down? Where are they going to go? One of them's going on the church, we know for sure, and one of them's coming our way. So we said, look, while we have the guy here, let's get a price, let's take the trees now, while we can. I handed a tree across the road, and in doing so, I would have liked to have gone down on the town right away for a couple of reasons, but we stopped there because you had to do it stump, but you had to do it the price of the trees. The idea was, the initial position was, to take enough trees to get a fellow to come in, take down the trees at no cost to the town, a wash. We further expanded that to Chiva Cemetery. Chiva Cemetery, for a long time, we had a tree in there that was rotten. One of the fellows who came to give me a price or taking the stump down said, you can't leave that tree up. He just cut it down for nothing, it was that bad. So then we decided, look, we got to do the perimeter around the cemetery, we're going to clear out 15 feet around it. We're going to take out the dead trees out of Chiva Cemetery, because we were at risk of -- the ladies that take care of the cemetery have repeatedly asked us to do something with that cemetery, particularly the trees. We are. What it came down to is we solicited a few tree companies, if you will, to come in and look at what we were going to do, and to give us a price. Our best price came down to, and let me add this, in deciding what trees to take down, we were offered the services, and most of these trees, I might add, are private property, they're not town property, and it was the graciousness of the landowners that own that property that also afforded us the services of their professional forester to assist me in picking out what trees, which ones could be a problem, which could not. It doesn't go beyond my layman's lack of knowledge of trees, I went to a professional. So we were very fortunate to have that professional help us. With that said, the prices that came in to take the trees down, I couldn't get it done for an even swap. So to offset $1,000 for this common, $1,000 for the cemetery comes to about $2,000. So the question is, where can we get some product to offset the cost? We looked at Melody Preserve. That's what we're looking at right now. But that has to be a very, very select cut, not to endanger that reserve, preserve, but there's also land that we own at the town garage. There's an ample supply of pines there. Pines right now happen to be more valuable than hardwoods as it sits today. The $2,000 from the capital reserve fund came up because in order to get the work done, we have to pay for it, rather than putting it in the operating budget, we wanted to put it before the town. This $2,000 is going to be recouped when we have the other work done. Is it where the other work done? We're probably going to make some money. But that's the story to the trees. Any questions?
Basically, that's my question, was addressing. We're taking the money out of there, and we're going to make some money on trees.
That's correct.
And I just want to make sure that this thing is set up so that the money we get from the secondary trees don't go into a slush fund and not repay back that, you know what I mean?
To return the money back to the capital?
Right, yeah.
That would be fine.
I mean, if it's going to, if we're going to remove $2,000 to pay specifically for this, then the money we make should be returned to that fund.
It will be probably in excess of $2,000.
But you'll have to have a warrant article to do that next year.
Go ahead.
We can't amend this article?
He can amend this article.
You can.
So you need to amend, you make amendment now. You amend that the money be replenished, and then proper.
Right, and that's what I'd like to do, is to make sure that we have, we already have it in writing, that if we're going to take this money for a specific purpose and we anticipate getting repaid, that the money go back in. So I hope that we make an amendment.
Do you want to write an amendment?
Do you want to write it?
Yeah, it has to be written.
Brian, for everybody, any amendments that anyone wants to submit. Hank's going to ask you to put it in writing first and then submit it, and there's only one amendment on the floor each time. That's usually what happens.
I know that at one of the selectman meetings, you had said that you were going to mark the trees before town meeting. Have we had a chance to do that?
The minutes that we went over at the last selectmen's meeting was, I was going to mark the trees, and the minutes said that prior to the annual meeting, I didn't say prior to the annual meeting, I said, once the town approves the money, I would be glad to mark every tree with the forester who's going to direct us on what trees should be taken and what shouldn't. Presently, right now, around town hall, you'll see trees with orange tape on them. Those trees have been designated by the landowner, they're definitely not coming down. The forester now who will be assisting us is out of town, he won't be back in till late. That forester will be my guide for what trees should stay, which trees should go. Not going to cut down, not going to suggest we cut down good viable trees that aren't posing a problem, that have a good root base, we're not worried about them coming down. We're all going to trim the maple over here, but that's kind of a, it makes the square kind of picturesque, so that's not coming down, but we do have to trim it. And I have professionals that are going to do that. So to answer your question about marking them, when you guys say we can do it, I'll be very happy to put pink, blue, and green ribbons all over the place.
You had photographs.
Yes.
Are they available?
Sure.
You might want to put them on the back so people can see that.
All right, I can do that, yeah, sure. But I'd like to know if we want to do it before I waste my time. Yes?
You mentioned Chiva Cemetery, that really has nothing to do with this article.
Correct. But that's the direction we're going to go with. It could be short and sweet rotten.
Well, one of the amendments, they got to amend.
If anybody else has got any amendments in their heads for these other articles coming down, we probably believe you to write them out ahead of time, you feel the urge.
Plus said sum of $2,000 to be redeposited to the building maintenance capital reserve fund upon removal and sale of tree from the town property. Now, I need a motion, put it on the floor, and a second.
Here's the motion.
You've written a motion, who seconded it?
Oh, seconded.
All right, all right. Any discussion on the amendment? We'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the amendment passes as read. Now we will vote on Article 3 as amended. I'll have to read that again. See if the town will vote and raise appropriate the sum of $2,000 for the purpose of removing those trees which could potentially damage the town hall and museum and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of $2,000 from the building maintenance capital reserve created in 1980. Then with the amendment, said sum of $2,000 to be redeposited to the building maintenance capital reserve fund upon removal of sale of tree from the town property. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 4, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of $4,000 with the capital reserve fund for property revaluation, recommended by the selectmen.
I'm going to check the articles, right?
Yeah, okay. Second?
Second.
All right, you got that? Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead, you can.
This year, many of you have noticed that we did have a revaluation. Every five years, it's mandated that we have to have one. Our town does do one thing very well. We do our pickups, we do, we have permits, and then we have inventories. Since we did such a good job, the DRA let us off the hook from having a $40,000 to $50,000 revaluation, let us do what's called a statistical revaluation. It was a considerable savings for us doing the job that we do. If we're skipping a lot of places and being sloppy in our work, we would really have a heck of a bill to pay. But in the meantime, we're going to have to look down the road for the next five years. We want to have something put away, rather than say, whoops, we got to come up with $30,000. We may not have the courtesy of having the statistical evaluator that we had this past year, is John McSorley. He may not be doing it. His price to the town, he can have Mrs. Landry, his bid was what, $7,800? $7,800, whereas most other bidders were coming in at $35,000 and $40,000, respectively. But we want to prepare for that day when it comes, so I highly recommend that we go this route.
Any more discussion? A question, Bill?
John, I have a question. So you anticipate that every year we'll be asking for this money, until the next valuation?
Probably, Bill, we would be looking to do something like this. We wanted to put more in this year, but looking at the way things were drifting with a bad economy and a lot of taxpayers having a tough time, we scaled it back, and our goal of the board was to give us a level funded budget, as much as possible. We did not want to give people a tax increase from the town side, and we held the line pretty well.
Any more discussion?
Where did the $8,000 that the budget overran on last year's statistical revaluation, where did that money come from? Obviously, we didn't have the money to proceed with it, if only $6,000 was appropriated, $8,000 coming in is better than 100% of what was set aside for a revaluation. That money came from somewhere, and if this was a surprise, a revaluation, and it doesn't sound that way, it sounds like it's required every five years, we should have had some money set aside for this.
Let me comment some more. I'll have Treasurer help give an assessment of that in a minute, Mike, just so we can qualify what your question is. We had to have a revaluation, we were not putting away for that before. We were trying to keep our own costs down the town. Reval's a pretty expensive proposition. The DRA came up and pretty much put the fist on us and said we had to do it. And then we dragged the commissioner of the property appraisal division to a selectmen's meeting and said, this is, you know, like an unfunded mandate, why are you doing this to us? And then we managed to convince him of the fact, please, can we do a statistical reval? And he, at first, was kind of hesitating, and I had to pull a bit of history on him. I said, you ever hear of the French Revolution? You know what happened? That's what's going to happen with the DRA if this keeps up. And then he looked at it again and said, yes, this is the way we'll go. But after the $8,000, we had to pull it, if I'm correct, Brian, from the executive.
Well, essentially, when we pass a town budget, the selectmen are only bound to expend within the categories to the extent of the bottom line of the budget. They can move funds from one category to another. So if you look at page 13 of your budget, in any category, they're in the expenditures column, the actual expenditures on the column six, where that expenditure is less than what was appropriated in column four, you can take the money out of any one of those columns. The money that wasn't expended in those categories was expended somewhere else to get the work of the town done. And to say specifically, this dollar came from here and went from there, there's no way to do that. Some categories are under-spended, and some categories got money added to them in order to cover the expenses, and this was one of the expenses they had to do. I think what Mr. Landry is probably driving at is that the highway fund was under-spended by about $11,000. Is that the point?
I think the point is, is that we
I think that the point is, is that we probably knew that this revaluation was coming last year when we sat in this hall, and that there needs to be some truth in budget. If you know something's coming up that might cost $35,000, it shouldn't have come up last year so that money could have been set aside at the time, so that the money that's appropriated in other areas for a set purpose, an intended purpose, that that money gets spent in those categories. This is, it's a broad difference in what you set aside and what you spend. And if you knew that there was a revaluation coming, the time to get the money set up to do these things is when we're sitting here. And I just keep finding that this overruns, this overruns, that means it comes out of where you're really going to get the money out of a tight budget like this. It comes out of road maintenance. And the stuff just keeps getting not done. Promises made 10, 12 years ago to do road projects have not yet been met. We keep pulling the payment off of roads, thinking we're going to fix roads, and they don't get, they don't get fixed. Put the money aside for road payments, it's a statistical revaluation. It may have gone into some other category that fell short. The budget needs to reflect the actual cost of doing business in town and not hope that we'll have enough money to keep the road agent busy the rest of the year. The projects aren't getting done, and you keep putting them on the back burner. They get more expensive every year, the DTS rules get tighter every year. And the longer we put off these projects, the people over north are suffering badly for the condition of roads over there, and they've been torn up. It's been 10 or 12 years ago when I sat on the board of selectmen. And we can only make these promises and deny the work for so long. Eventually, you're going to spend it one way or another. People are spending an animal on their individual cars getting bad for rather than the money being spent through taxes to fix the roads so that their cars are faster. That's what it's for. That we should have truth in budgeting so that the cost in this budget that you produce actually reflects what it costs to do this.
Okay. Okay.
Just to add to, I quite agree with the discussion, Mike. Granted, we maybe didn't get as much done on the roads. We'd like to, but I think the whole objective has to remain in place that we are setting aside for this now. We didn't back then. No, alls I can say is I'm sorry. We were trying to make ends meet for this community at the same, at that particular point in time. And the DRA just got a little heavy with us. But, in the meantime, this year, we have been very, very aggressive, and we'll talk about it later in this meeting if it has to be brought up. Very aggressive. We have a professional grant writer. We have a tremendous amount of grant money out there floating that can be most, we stand very likely to receive a sizable amount of money. And selecting the debt myself and our new member will probably be dealing with this matter when the next legislature first comes. Where this, a lot of our road work can be accomplished and it don't be accomplished at our watch.
Can we come back to the reval? I mean, that's what this article's about.
Yep.
I work closely with John McSorley. We were very lucky. He was very good. The results, we, I believe, Artie and I met with DRA this past week. They are very, very pleased with the job that we did. The question came up, is it going to be possible for us to get away with it in the next five years? Said if we continue with our maintenance records, there's a distinct possibility. However, he can't promise that. We can't promise that. If we even continue putting the money away at the current level, we're not going to have anywhere near enough to cover a full reval, which could run as much as $60,000 to $70,000 over the next five years. That's for a complete reval. If we do another statistical update, as John said, they ran, the closest one in the bids that we put out was $18,000, and the next one was $25,000, and we had another one for $36,000. So we, we got a tremendous deal with John McSorley. But it also took, John was one man, and I mean, I worked with him almost every day this summer. He and I went out and did it. The chances of us getting somebody of that quality, and he's old DRA, so I mean, you know, he did a big, he did us a very good job. But I really hope that we do fund, start putting some money aside, and hopefully, you know, maybe we can put a little bit more aside, because even at this point, we're not going to have anywhere near enough to even do a statistical.
Any more discussion?
Can we, can we go back to the intent of the Article four, putting $4,000 aside? It's not enough that we wanted to put aside, but we have to face the revaluation costs. And what prior boards of selectmen did, I looked at the cup, at the glass half full, not half empty. What other board of selectmen did is not our problem. Right now, we're faced with revaluation. We have to raise the money. We are raising it each year to limit the impact on our taxes. Our goal is not to raise taxes. We've cut the budget, and I'm going out of the limb right now. I am optimistic that things will spend, barring any unforeseen occurrences that may occur. I'm optimistic that there's money in that budget this year, and once we use it, we're going to be using it on other things next year. So I'm positive about our budget, but we do need to start putting money aside in our piggy bank to pay for bills we know we got coming up. I will address the questions of the roads, what we've done, and what we, our forecast is to do when it comes to our budget. I'll answer every one of Mike's concerns.
Okay.
So I want to be sure I'm clear on what I'm going for. What I'm hearing in this discussion is this is a minimal amount that the selectmen have decided that we should begin to put aside. They understand that we may have to increase this naturally in the future, but we need to start some.
Yes.
And this is going to prevent a tax increase.
Exactly.
I call it question.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Shall I read it to the end before we vote on it? Article four, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 to be added to the capital reserve fund for property revaluation." All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, pass. Article five, "Sees the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept gifts of personal property other than money which may be offered to the town of Dorchester to any public purpose such as authorization. Authorization shall remain in effect until responded by the voters of the town at the annual town meeting."
Second.
John, who?
Second.
Artie seconded it. All right, any discussion? You want to discuss it?
This is, this will allow us as a town to accept a gift other than money that anyone donates to the town, be it property, be it work being done towards our grant, which we'll discuss in our budget, towards our grant percentage that we have to do with in-kind services. This is a legal, legal article which allows us to legally accept that gift, that the town says, "Okay, we can accept it." That's it, that's it in a nutshell.
So are you telling me that currently, the town cannot accept in-kind donations?
We have, there was nothing in our articles that, and this, this came up when we were writing the grants, there was no warrant article found that said that we could accept person, we could accept gifts of personal property. If you wanted to donate the property.
It comes back to town meeting. But you can accept in-kind donations of services?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't have anything to do with service?
No.
It's just property?
No.
My other.
Well, it also, it also has to do with, if we have, say, a logger.
Yeah.
That wants to do some work for the town, and he wants to remove, do some work on the side of the road and take out prop, put some stumps and all that good stuff. He's going to donate. It's a gift. It just makes it all, he's going to, makes it all legal. That's pretty much it.
Yes.
Question on that?
Yeah.
Would every one of those instances, anything that was accepted by a selectman, be documented at the selectman's meeting?
Would have to be.
Okay, so every time the selectmen have accepted a gift in the town's name, you know, anybody or anything, it would be documented in the next selectman's meeting?
Right, it would have to be done by the public record.
Yeah. Let me say this, Ron. At least for the next three years, we know it's going to be that way.
Well, no. I mean, if this is not written into the article, it needs to be written into the article, because otherwise, we open up the town to favors being done for friends.
Yeah.
You know, undocumented, yeah, you do this and we'll take up your taxes, or you do this and we'll do that for you, or, and I'm not saying anybody's got an intention of doing that.
Yeah.
But unless it's written in that, you know, at the first.
Come on, come on. That's why we're glad you're here, buddy. That's why we post warrants. Anybody's got any other, that's why I said, we got paper up there. We welcome anybody, everybody's input.
Next year, we'll supply laptops and printers.
Yeah. Bill?
Does this give the leeway to the selectmen not to accept something that's offered? Or do you have, if somebody says, "Well, I want to give you this piece of land and it's just off the land," can you refuse to accept that gift?
I don't think this would translate.
Or you have to accept it?
No, this, this.
Whatever.
This just opens up the legal avenue that we can do it, you know, rather than just saying we could, if it's asked by, we would probably say, "Sure, we can turn it down."
You can turn it down.
Right, we would, I would turn it down.
So you don't have to accept it.
But at the same time, we would, this is allowing us to accept it.
We have, let's put it like this. I would hope that the common sense, well, okay, that's a tough one. That's kind of a tough, especially from selectmen. I mean, I understand that, but it would be, okay, I'll just look. Hey?
Yeah, yes.
I just, I'm confused. It's saying that three elements have been brought up. One is, there's interpreting what this means, land, services, and.
Property.
And personal property, whatever that means. I mean, what is, what is it we're actually doing here? Is it, because you just said it does not include land.
No.
Earlier, you're saying it did include it. So it does or does not. And also, services. For instance, we've had our forester help the town with preambulation of a town line. That was a donation of services anyway. I'm just, I just want to be clear. That's an instance, that's an example. And then, or else, what do you mean by personal property in this article? I'm confused.
I think it goes, well, it's like Bob donated a grader, I mean, to the town at one point. That would allow, I guess, basically, they didn't have anybody to accept it. But it's, that's, that's personal property. But there is an article that says, "If you're dealing with land, you have to vote as voters to accept it." And we've had several of those articles, to accept turnarounds. It's okay, Artie. And to accept the Melanie Wildlife Resort. If we're dealing with land, the voters have to agree to accept that land. But I'm, I'm thinking that personal property is more like people donating.
Right.
Is that not correct, Artie?
Yes.
Shovels and trucks.
It takes the gratuitous nature out of it, where this, where someone, the selectman or the town, is getting something for nothing and the town doesn't know about. It really makes it, it takes your gratuity out of it. Well, you're authorizing us to take gifts from people legally.
That has a value.
That has a value.
People will show up as being, "I donation of this many dollars." And we will know about it.
Yeah, and when we get into the in-kind services of a grant, of where we're going to make up services to match the cost, people may give us personal, what do they call it? Personal property or such to contribute towards the, our grants, our side of the grant. The town has said it's okay to take it. It's all originated from the grant, from the process of the R25% of a grant. That's what this article originated from. Wasn't brought up because there was anything going wrong. It's that we want to move forward, and we don't want to be stymied as we're going through the process to have to wait a year to come back to the town and say, "Can't we do this?" That, that's it, it's a, that's it in a nutshell.
Anybody else? Oh, Brian?
I don't have a site for the, for the actual RSA, but I believe from discussions I've had with other people at the Local Government Center and the Local Government Center Academy, in the way that other towns handle gifts, there was an RSA that requires the selectmen to accept those gifts, had a selectman be, it's got to come up that someone's big at town like Lomondary do it all at one meeting at the end of the year, even if the gift comes in during the year, simply so they can bring all the people in at once, do it all, and hand out certificates or whatever, everybody gets recognized at once. But there is a statute that covers that, and says that the selectmen have to accept those gifts, even though you have a warrant article that says that you have the ability to accept those gifts, it still has to be done at the selectman's meeting.
And just in terms of grants, I know at DeAkers, where I helped with some of the documentation of their grants, that every volunteer hour, we have to put a price on that's a donation, whenever we're, particularly with the state and the federal government, that is considered our matching. And so, like, now that this has been discussed, I better understand what this means, so that we don't actually, because our staff can only go, honey can only do so much. And so, if we have people helping them, like at the cemeteries, we're going to use some DeAkers staff to actually do some of the work, those would be volunteer hours that would then be donated to the town. And that is the requirement of most state and federal grants.
Just one more point. Just one more point. It was shown to me that back in 1998, I believe it was, particularly during the ice storms, there was an article passed where the town agreed that we could accept cash. So that, that wasn't even brought up, a cash donations or whatever. So we didn't have to address cash at this particular time, because the town already did that in 1998. So that was already covered. If anybody wanted to make a cash donation, it's okay.
All right. I'm going to read this amendment to Article four, five, and then I'll need a second part. Amendment to Article five, "Any such donation to be documented in the minutes of the selectmen's next regular meeting." Do I have a second for this? All right, I'll write a bit of that. All right, I'll.
Who was the first?
Huh? I imagine he's the one that's the president. Yeah. Any discussion on this amendment? All right, I'll put, all in favor of the amendment? Say aye. All opposed? All right. Now.
Do you need to read it?
Huh?
Do you need to read it?
Yeah, I will. Well, I have to read the article, then add the amendment. Okay. All right. We're going to vote on, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept gifts of personal property other than money which may be offered to the town of Dorchester for any public purpose, and such authorization shall remain effective until reconsidered by the voters of the town at an annual meeting." And, "Any such donations to be documented in the minutes of the selectmen's next regular meeting." All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article six, "Sees the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 3541 for the purpose of the town's matching shares of grant money received for town projects and to raise appropriate the sum of $50,000 placed in this fund. This appropriation shall be funded by our." This appropriation shall be funded by authorization, authorization to transfer that sum from the fund balance surface, and no amount to be raised from taxation to appointment of selectmen as agents to spend this fund, recommended by the selectmen.
Will we accept?
Huh?
Will we accept the article?
Yeah, well, I need somebody to put it on the floor.
Motion to accept.
And a second? Okay, discussion?
I'll start, Mr. Johnson. As I said a little bit earlier, when I was responding to Mr. Landis Commerce, that we have aggressively pursued grants. These grants, right now, we have three major mitigation grants pending, one for the Providence Road, one for the North Dorchester Road, and one for the Chievo Road. Now, these grants, we all have a match on these grants, but we have what is called these in-kind, part of our match is in-kind services. I'll have selectmen who can qualify a little bit more beyond what I'm saying here. So, but we also need a block amount of money in a fund that we may need to tackle in case we have to come up with some cash. We're hoping we don't have to, but we might. If we don't have to come up with it, fine, we can turn it back to the town, but we will have to use some of it. But, and I put it here, we're not raising this money out of our pockets, this is from the surplus monies that we have, so it's not coming out and affecting our tax rate in any way.
Want to address it, Brian?
No. Any more discussion?
I think it's kind of, I don't see how using surplus money does not raise taxes. You know, that's like the government of Washington right now, getting the money back from the bank and saying, well, we'll just use it for whatever we want, we're not gonna put it back in the treasury. It's gonna raise taxes on everybody. If there's surplus money, that should be used to lower the taxes, not put it apart and spent so as not to raise taxes. So I'm just a little uncomfortable with, with the way this is, is coming across, as an amount of $50,000 that, you know, it's extra money that we have, so let's put it in this fund and use it, and not appropriate, it's not gonna raise taxes. Well, yes it is, because taxes should be lowered by $50,000 otherwise.
I'd like to have the selectmen help. I'm not selecting.
I'm not sure that's... Town's fund balance currently is $105,401, change. The Department of Revenue Administration requires us to keep a percentage of that for emergency use. That percentage comes out to, I think in this case, it might have been $52,000 or something like that. The $50,000 that were appropriated and approved by DRA is below that. The reason that it makes sense to do this type of one-time appropriation of a fund balance is that that appropriation doesn't affect the tax rate. If you use fund balance to offset your taxes, and we take that fund balance and spend it against what we've appropriated in the budget this year, it gives us the opportunity to raise our budget, but we have a one-time revenue, that fund balance. Next year, if you work from that budget, even if you keep that budget the same, then you've got to raise that amount of money that was in the fund balance in taxes. So essentially, using fund balance to pay for your operating expenses works against you in the long run, and it does raise your tax rate. But when you use fund balance to pay for a one-time expense, then it holds your tax rate down, because you don't have to appropriate that block of money. You have acquired fund balance periodically as you've gone through the years by saving money on what you've expended out of your budget, and this year was a very small amount of money that was left over when we get done with the budget, I think it was less than $100. Other years it's been more. In years that we sell tax sale property, our fund balance made a lot. In years that we have an unexpected source of revenue, our fund balance made a lot. And by putting this money in a capital reserve fund, with the ability to use it against these one-time grant expenditures, it allowed us to fund those, one, without raising the tax rate, two, it allowed us to react immediately to the offer of a grant, and most times when a grant is presented to the town, you have a very short period in which to raise the money. In order to raise money to fund a grant at a special town meeting, you have to get the superior court to approve the town meeting, and then you have to have over 50% of the voters present at that meeting, and the number of voters we have in town, you can see we're way below 50% of the voters here. To get that many voters at a special town meeting would be almost impossible. So if we don't pass something like this, it gives the selectmen a fund that they can draw upon to do the matches, then we must as well throw all of the grant applications out the window, there's nothing we can do, we just won't be able to settle it.
Why speak, Andy?
I had a question, anyone's, I think it's a really good idea to go after what grants are available, is, anyone come up with an estimate of, like, what the potential total would be if you got all the grants, and is this amount, could you say, is that a large amount for that? As, the parlor is, we thought about going for grants to put in a, some way of powering this facility during a blackout or storm, we had a lot of talk about getting that.
Let's, the fund balance thing is something, I have to tell you, something I had to learn, because I used to call it a contingency fund, and it was always part of the operating, but I learned, had to learn how it works here, and Brian taught me, and it's, what he's saying makes, he's very good at what he does.
No, I, I wholly agree with what he's saying, and that it makes sense. My fear is that when you put this money in that we have...
Yep.
Okay, in the fund, and next year the budget runs over, and we end up with less than what we required to have on that flush fund, or whatever it's called, contingency fund, then we have to raise taxes to put the money back, even though we, because we've spent a bunch of it. That's my concern.
Basically, the amount that DRA requires us to keep in the fund balance is their recommended amount for us to be able to face a financial emergency, or something that comes up that's unexpected. They don't make us replace that if we have to use it, they allow it to build up. In fact, when I took over the treasury, our fund balance was a minus hundreds and something thousand dollars, and it took us several years to get that built up to where it is today. DRA allowed us to do that, they could have stepped in and said, yes, you have to put in a special warrant article to raise the money, but they didn't. They saw that we were moving in a positive direction and our balance was coming up. Where we've been the last five years, raising our fund balance year after year after year, I'm sure that if we got in a situation where our fund balance needed to be used, they'd look at the town directory and say, well, this town has a history of building fund balance, they'll get it built up in a short period of time, and I doubt very much that they'd require us to put in a special warrant article to simply raise money for the fund balance.
Look, and I understand that, but when, when you have, the reason it's built up over the last five years is because the taxes have gone up over the last five years.
No.
If the taxes had not gone up, we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have had equity.
The real reason we...
The money's gotta come from people.
The tax rate is set by the Department of Revenue Administration by subtracting our revenue from our expenditures. So if we pass a budget, and we have a realistic assessment of what we have in for revenue at the time you set taxes in October, they take the budget expenditure figure, subtract the revenue figure from it, and that's the tax rate. That's how they figure the tax rate. They don't figure the fund balance, you know, the tax rate off. The only time it ends in the tax rate is the selectmen say we want to apply some of the fund balance against the rate. They do that, and we get into that situation where we're really using a false revenue, which we don't want to do. So, as far as extending this $50,000 fund balance for this purpose, DRA has already approved it, as long as the vote is approved, because all of these articles are submitted to DRA to make sure that they're within their guidelines before they come to them to get put on warrant.
Any more? Bill? There are, the grants that we've gone out for, first with the energy, through whole air security emergency management, we've already applied, it's to place generators for town hall and for the town office, is a 50% match. The cost is about $35,000, this is what I want to explain to you, so you don't get too fearful about this $50,000, I want to explain to you about in-kind services, of how we've set this up. Using the, using the example of the two generators, about $35,000 we got price for to put both in, the state is gonna match 50%. Part of that work, part of that cost, though, is gonna be offset by work we do, which they call in-kind services, which is gonna be part of our match, but we're gonna use our backhoe, our road agent, our digging trenches and all that, which is gonna offset costs. That's part of using in-kind services rather than putting out cash from the town. So the answer to that, and we've also, for the generators, that's in our operating budget, there's $14,000 you see there, which is allocated to pay the match of that, that grant for the generators. Now, we're assuming that that's gonna be approved. I assume nothing when it comes to the federal or state government that we're gonna get money. So let's assume we're not gonna get the generators, $14,000 in there is, we're not gonna use it, but it is in there to get one generator, and that will make that decision if we get the nine grants. So that takes care of the generators. As far as the roads, we very regret, we, John had a fellow from, Steve Iacuzzi, he's a Catalina consultant, excellent grant writers, we've been working with them for quite a while now, and actually, it actually started getting money for the museum, town hall, and the church. That was the original focus, was the common, was our historic district, to make the repairs and build it up, and make it as beautiful a place as we could. We weren't successful in getting grants.
Yeah.
What came to that was hazard mitigation grants, road improvements, bridges. We've had a long contention about Providence Road, we've had a problem with the top of the North Dorchester Road, Thayer Hill, we had a problem down the other Melancers, which Riley calls Melancin Flats, and Chievo Road's been neglected for quite a while. We asked, Tye, let me stick with yours, I'll get into the roads and the budget part. To answer your question, we've applied for over a million dollars in grants, total. That's if everything got approved. I'm gonna assure you that there is no way in heck that the federal government is gonna give us a million dollars, but we're gonna keep applying, and we're gonna keep applying, and we're gonna keep applying. If we get a piece of the pie, we'll be happy. Now just, just suppose we get that $250,000 that we want to repair North Dorchester Road, we gotta come up with a match. We have to back 25% of that cost. So let's just say, on your sake, that cost is $50,000. We have to know, as selectmen, that we have $50,000 somewhere if we have to go for it. We have no intentions whatsoever of using that $50,000. What we're gonna do, and what is, what you do do, is you make that $50,000 match in-kind services. We bill, we bill for every minute, every piece of gas, every time of equipment, every piece of labor time, everything that goes in there, we do with every FEMA grant that we get, it's what we bill for time, benefits, retirement benefits, everything gets billed off towards that match. I'm hoping we never have to touch that 50 grant, but we cannot move ahead searching for grants, and then saying, okay, we can do it, without you telling us it's okay to go ahead, and that we do have a little pocket of money to work with if we need it. We have no intentions of using it. I can't sit here and tell you that we won't use it, but I'm telling you, our grants are not written to use that 50 grant. That's where the money comes in to how we're gonna match this. Any, any questions with that? Bill?
Again, ideally not having to use that $50,000.
Yes.
But supposing you have to use $5,000, is the intention then to keep this reserve at $50,000?
Yes. Yes, and it, it, what you're doing, what the town would be doing, would be telling us, look, it's okay, fellas, you got $50,000 in reserves, we're not gonna raise your taxes for it, but it's, I had, Rod, I had to learn this, how they do this here too, and it's, I'm still confused about, I'm still confused about the fact, you're gonna be voting on a budget that took effect, takes effect January 1st, and we're already two and a half months into the budget, so figure it out without. But we're having a good winter, so it's different, but I'm learning. We may use that 50 grant bill, and we're hoping the 50 should be enough, but you have to understand too, all these grants aren't coming to us at once. We're not gonna be said, here's a million dollars, Dorchester, and there's no way in heck that we're not gonna stage that out over three or four, three or four years to get to work there. That's, that's about it. Bill?
Can I make a friendly amendment? I suppose doesn't have to be in writing.
You're a friendly guy.
Okay, how can you, if you just say, to raise and appropriate and maintain the sum of $50,000?
No, can I ask you to say that? We may not wanna maintain the 50, we may wanna, if we don't need it, we're not gonna use it. So why maintain something that we don't need?
But you don't know when you might need it. Is this a one-year?
No.
Is there a time limit on this?
No. No, it's gotta, it's gotta be over, what?
Nope.
Usually at a board of selectmen meeting, when she sits back like that, it means I said something wrong, and then when somebody yells at her, she says, I'm only the secretary. It didn't take the one to get her act down.
Brian?
I think the problem arises that when we try to put something in an article that says we'll maintain the level of funding, then we're dealing with a floating appropriation. The DRA is a... DRA wants us to tell us, tell them what our fixed appropriations are. With our budget, appropriations are fixed, revenues flow, that's why we don't know what tax rate is until October, because the revenue's flowing at that. The appropriations were all we got within the, you know, our tax rate tomorrow.
All these articles were approved by DRA, and that's pretty much what governed us on how to word this, to the grant appropriations, at town council.
Being that this is going to be put in a capital reserve fund, that means that the town is gonna have to vote to extract any monies from that reserve fund at the town meeting?
No.
No.
Not with that last part. You're authorizing the selectmen as agents to extend the fund.
Okay. I understand correctly.
Any more discussion?
Oh, all right. Just want to follow up with what Artie was talking about, and I mentioned it, who we're over to. We're looking at mitigation, mitigation basically meaning we want to do some things so they don't happen again. Classic cases of the Providence Road. We have a bridge washed out down there, and we have a sub, what I call a substandard bridge prior to that, it was like nothing more than an old steam pipe, or an old locomotive, section, an old locomotive, which is put under, with gravel put on the, on the stream there, and then gravel on top of it, and then some time pre-trimming, which is not so trimmed anymore, it's been pretty well clipped. We're looking at some major work on this road to bring it, it's an historical road, it can be, pretty nicely put together. What draws FEMA into the town like this is something that happened down there. We have a river that has to be reworked, and that takes permitting with the environmental services, and we have, and then we're looking at the two bridges getting done, and the road work, and some of the widening and cleaning up, it can be a very nice place. That draws them here, but while they're here, we can get the Worth Road done, and we can get the Chievo Road done. And I think that's what we're looking at, and I think we stand a very good chance of seeing some things happen.
Could you, could you, do you have a priority for the use of those grants? We've listened to three roads being brought up, do we have a priority if, you know, they're not obviously gonna pass us a million, so we can do all three at once? Do we have priorities?
We wanted to Thayer Hill first, we want the lower part of North Dorchester Road, we want to fix up Chievo, and then we want to go to Providence. That's how they were built, that's how they were written. Don't leave here with the conception that the federal government is giving us a billion dollars tomorrow. This is a long... This is a long term, we're going to be fighting with this for years, years on. We're going to try to chip away. We've had, John's reached out, we've played the political game, John has reached out to some real good contacts to get things done. We're hoping to, look, we're hoping to get something that we're going to stay at. And that's pretty much where we are. Don't walk out with any misconceptions. So when we walk out of here, let's keep the story, I'm counting on you to keep the story straight.
Move the question.
Move the question? Okay.
Who seconded it?
Anybody seconded it? Yeah. Bill? All right. Cut that. All right. Article six. Sees the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 35 401 for the purpose of the town matching shares of grant money received for town projects and to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in this fund. This appropriation shall be funded by authorizing the transfer of that sum from the fund balance surplus, and no amount to be braved from taxation and to be appointed, appoint the selectmen as agents to expend this fund, recommended by the selectmen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article seven. Sees the town will vote to accept and implement the recommendations of the pay and classification study conducted by the local government center and prepared for the benefits of compensation committee establishment at the 208th town meeting. Have somebody put it on the floor. John, multiple seconded it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion. Anybody want to discuss it?
I'd like to speak to the article.
All right.
Would you like to speak to your position on?
Yes. I was a member, I was chosen through a drawing at the selectmen's meeting for a group that was established, what, two, three, this is the third?
This is the second year.
Second year. Second year. To establish a group of citizens to investigate how Dorchester's pay and benefits classification, how we apply, how we set rates for payment, both salaried and elected, because it came about, anybody that's been here knows that I stood up and made a recommendation at the town meeting that they maintain benefits for the road agent. It became a huge discussion. The committee was appointed. We worked all of one year. We tried to do our own investigation, and then we reported back to you last year. We made some recommendations to get us through the current year till we could fund a classification and pay study done by the local government center. It was pretty obvious at the last town meeting that your concern was that one shoe doesn't fit all. I believe Mrs. Trot made us, or made the motion and included the word current, so that in all of these things, that it wasn't something that was going to carry over on.
It doesn't.
The recommendations that we made were for the current year and for one year only, and the current road agent, and the current employee. So we, you voted at the last town meeting to keep the committee intact until we got the pay and classification study from the local government center. We began to worry that we might not get it. We didn't meet again, but sure enough, in October, the local government center got back to us, and I have put a copy of the entire study, which is over on the back table, but it's like a 44-page document, so I couldn't publish it all. But I did, if you don't have the handout, I did, we did go through as a committee, and we put together basically what the study entails. As a payroll clerk for the town, I can honestly tell you that it's very, very confusing. First of all, the selectmen do have the authority to set benefits. They also have the authority to set wage scales. So we've got, you know, we've got the dog, the animal control officer, who the selectmen pay $9 an hour. You've got anybody with a CDL license who gets $12.50 an hour, but it doesn't matter what they're doing, if they've got the license, they get that much more. I was getting $8 an hour. Some of the other road health was getting $10 an hour. I mean, it was, it was just an absolute disaster. The cemetery, I mean, Betty knows how hard that was. I mean, we couldn't figure out from one pay period to another what the salary rate was. The classification study was more than we could ever have asked for, and it basically, it took into account, they could get information that we as a committee were unable to do. They looked into surrounding towns and towns that have similar geographic locations, which of course takes care of our needs. Okay, so we didn't want a town down in the southern part of the state being compared with the needs of Dorchester. They took into account population, so they went through and they looked at comparable towns. And I know you've all heard this, and if I hear it one more time, you see my screen, but Dorchester's unique. But somehow the local government center was able to find 13 towns that were comparable in geographic location, population, and equalized valuation, which is very important, because that's what we pay taxes on, our equalized valuation. And similarities in town operations. In other words, what we expect the employees of the town to do for the constituents. And what they basically did was they came up with, and they gave some recommendations. They gave an overview as to, you know, where we were on par with the surrounding towns, and just, the towns included Acworth and Bath, Croydon, Goshen, Groton, Jackson and Marlowe, Monroe, Nelson, Shelburne, Stark, Stratford, and Waterville Valley. And without, you know, I know Waterville Valley has fairly high tox rate.
Right.
Okay, and, but these other towns are very similar, and they are located in the northern part of the state. So they are closer to what we are. And then they made some recommendations. They told us where we were on par with the others, why we were deficit and some, some things we needed to do to bring some consistency to setting salary rates and what people were paid. And the basic thing is, these are just recommendations. There are no numbers attached to this at all. But it is based on a rubric, which is, up until this point, our only rubric is, do you have a CDL license or not? So basically what they did was they broke it down into the knowledge required to do the job, which means that the board of selectmen and a group, hopefully that they can get some help from you, we need to have job descriptions. I mean, the job description piece is just, it, that was one of our greatest faults and lacking, was that we had no job descriptions. The supervisor controls. How do we maintain these? The other thing was guidelines, complexity, the scope and effect, personal contacts, the purpose of contacts, physical demands, work environment, supervisory and management responsibilities. Okay, so those were all things that they took into account. So they basically said that they would like to see, the first priority would be job descriptions. The job descriptions should be set up so that we know what we expect as a people we hired to do. We looked at analysis of pay data, and basically what we took at one point was, we took the road agent's position, the highway maintainer's position, and we threw in the custodian position, because those were areas, and we could get, we could get three positions for the money we paid them. Fortunately, they said, once we have this data, they can apply it to any position. So should we decide to do, want to do the secretary position, so they can do that now, and it won't cost the town anymore. The local government center will provide us with that information. They recommend that because the selectmen have the ability to set salary rates, you know, how much you get an hour, they need to be very careful that they don't run, they don't run a lot of the people that are set for a contracted position, such as the road agent. Because what you find happening is, you find that your salaried employees, they don't want the contracted position. We've not been able to hire a highway maintainer. Why? Because the highway maintainer makes a lot more money working for a salary than he does to take the position and become, or her, become a highway maintainer. So the rubric says, you know, when you do this, if you're going to increase the hourly rate of the custodian, you need to look and make sure that you increase it on up through, that it's overall, or don't do it at all. This random placing of salaries is going to get us into trouble in the long run, and we're not going to be able to get people to do the work that we need to do. And I know it doesn't show today, but we are growing. There are more and more needs. DRA, the state, DES, everybody else is, they're coming in and saying, you've got to do this. It's not the good old days where you say, oh yeah, I'll go in a couple hours and do it. It's not that way anymore. Paperwork, I mean, the paperwork is huge. Brian knows that. I know that. The selectmen know that. The good old days are showing up. At selectmen's meeting, signing the checks and walking out 15 minutes later to go to the neighbors and have a beer are long gone. It's an incredible amount of work, and we are going to have to pay people to do it, and we need to have qualified people to do that. As I said, there are no numbers hitched to this. The selectmen, and as far as the benefits go, it says, you know, when you set your benefit policy, you do it through a contracted period so that you can get your employees in to discuss their needs. They know what the budget will allow, what the budget won't allow. It's a negotiating piece, which is something we should have had a long time ago. It shouldn't just be, well, will you do this for eight bucks an hour? You know, will you do that and use your own equipment? If you, will you work for $7 an hour and use your own equipment? There's all kinds, we need to have this in writing. We need to have a process by which the selectmen can follow to set these things. And the town can come in and say, okay, you want to work for the town, okay? What are your qualifications? You follow this, 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 and this on the rubric. And then you've got your set amount. The selectmen will be better able to set their budget. You will be better able to know what you're expending to get what done. And it will be their responsibility, and for the first time, I must say, and you all know that we've been somewhat at acrimonious odds with the selectmen as to, you know, what you're paying people, what you're doing this, what you're doing that. And I think that the fact that we got a group that were at odds to come together, the presentation was done at a board meeting, the board was impressed with the document, I'm impressed with the document, I think Darlene was, Andy really doesn't have that much time to take a look at it, but it doesn't bind us into money, but it does bind us into a process. And I really think we need it. And basically what it says is to accept the recommendations and attempt to implement. And one of the, if you look through the recommendations, it says, you know, the first year, you don't do anything. You start right where you are, and you fit everybody onto that rubric. And the selectmen feel that with the budget that they put through, that they absolutely can. In fact, they were able to reduce it if they are allowed to use this and apply it correctly. I think it'll work. I think it'll benefit the town. And I really hope that you'll accept the study. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have read this in detail. I mean, Darlene helped me find this information. And this is common sense. Anybody who's ever managed people, that's what they did. I mean, there is not one new piece of information in here that I haven't used as an employer. I guess that the political transition of how we would use this is what we're talking about. And I, so I have a question for the selectmen since you put this online, is that why are we making a vote on something that is not the money, rather than you coming to us with your recommendations of how you're going to implement this at each year so that we know what it's going to cost? This is basic management, 101. There is not one new thing in here that's a way, I agree, that we should have been paying people this way all the time. But within that, there are unique circumstances. When somebody chooses their own hours, obviously, we don't pay them as much because of the reality of their choosing their own hours and where they're going to work is very different than their having other responsibilities. The selectmen have to have the flexibility to deal with those realities, not just approve a position. Because a position comes in at $34,000, doesn't mean that we're paying somebody $34,000 if they're choosing their own hours. All of those are negotiating points. I absolutely agree. So I'm sitting here saying, why is this here? Why are you asking us to tell you to be good managers? So, you know, this is, I'm glad you finally got this. I'd be happy to sit on a committee and help you implement it. I do not think any employee of this town should be setting salaries. Any employee should be on a salary committee. It's insane to me. It was conflict of interest to begin with. The only person who should have been there was Amy. Not that I'm saying that they didn't do their best and everything, but there's a built-in bias when you have employees setting their own grids and their own salaries. So I don't see a reason for this, and I would make a motion that we pass over it and not vote, and that we just do not deal with this on this agenda. So I'm making a motion that we pass over this because it makes, it's not appropriate for us to be.
Got a second for that, Tom? Please do here. No second?
I was sorry, I want a second.
He's seconded it? All right.
Do I have to write that, if I'm making a motion, pass it over? I don't think so.
I don't think so either. All right. He seconded it over here.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of passing over this article?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Hmm.
Hand vote.
I want, yeah, I want a hand vote. That was close. All in favor, raise your hand. Are you going to count? One. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. 20, I got 20. You got, were you good?
I got 22.
22?
Mm-hmm. Can you raise your hands again?
Yeah.
All opposed?
Yeah.
Two go bigs.
14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26. I got 26. One more time. Are you throwing in your hand at the last man? No, okay. 26.
And who's opposed?
All opposed, raise your hand. Are you with Darlene? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. 13 opposed.
13 opposed.
Don't forget to say, ask for the extensions.
You're quick.
Done this a few times.
You gotta ask for extensions.
Extensions?
Anybody abstained?
Yeah. You abstained?
Two, two abstentions.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to pass over?
Yep.
Article seven. Article eight. Sees the town will vote to amend the 1981 approval it gave for the establishment of the Town Historic District Commission. Article 24, 1981. End of town meeting by deleting that article's limit on the commission's members serving more than two successive years, changing the method of member appointment from at town meeting to be a meeting to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and providing for up to five alternative members of the commission to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Put on the board. He's seconding it. Anybody second? All right, discussing. Okay, what?
This is one of these articles which is kind of difficult because it's brewed quite a bit of controversy as of latest we've seen from the media. But I'm going to drift away from that. Is that the board's intent here is, I'd like to go digress. Back in 1980, the state under its statutes 89A through 89-L set up for historic districts to be created. 89 does not exist anymore. It exists under 673:4. And we are simply trying to upgrade the historic district to the current statutes. Because in 673A:4, there is nothing stated about having term limits. If we were starting a new historic district today, we would not even be looking at term limits. We have something that has existed. Now we have to clean it up. Some house cleaning. We want to get this correct. On the second part of it, you know, coming up and trying to appoint people at town meetings. When we first moved to this town, paying to meetings back in 1974, it was done in a similar way, trying to appoint people at town meetings. That was difficult. It's very cumbersome, very unwieldy. And then we also have to provide up to five alternate members under the commission to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So, we're asking the town to keep up with the law. Let's not go backwards and stay backwards in dinosaur age. Let's move forward.
Bill?
Question, John. You say there's no mention of term limits.
Right.
Does that mean there can be term limits? Or that you can have no term limits?
Yeah.
It's like, either way?
It's one legal opinion, Bill, which I had from attorney Tom from the local government center. He said, "He recommended that we clarify it. If we want to have term limits, we can have it." But I was speaking to him yesterday, and he said, "We just should upgrade the law." Upgrade to the law, and he said he would suggest against term limits.
But there's no, the law does not state--
It does not say you can't.
So, we can do either have term limits or not have--
Or not have term limits.
Can you explain your reason for not having term limits?
One of them is, and this is my concern, it's the board's concern, is that we don't have people in this town going begging for jobs. We try, we're trying to fill positions. Brian, how many?
How many positions are we filling?
We're trying to fill, you mentioned, essentially, there's 56 positions listed on page 13 and 14 of the town before. If we were to eliminate all of the people who served in more than one position or whose family name appears in more than one position, 43 of us would be down the road and you'd have 13 left. Phil. So, when you look at this community, you've got a very small number of people who are willing and have the time and the inclination to serve on the board. For instance, if the moderator will indulge you in it, can every person who's here who was formally asked the Board of Selectmen prior to this issue coming up to be named as a member of the Historic District Commission and been denied, raise their hand? Nobody.
Can I reverse that? Has any, who has been asked to be a member of the Historic District Commission and turned them down? Thank you.
And Betty Ann has a very good point. Historically, since 1991, I don't remember ever having Historic District Commission members appointed at meetings. I don't remember anybody doing reappointments at selectmen's meetings. The fact is, it has become, the process in this town is if somebody is filling a position and doesn't want to get out, and nobody's pushing for them to get out, they've been left remaining in that position. And I don't believe that that's a conspiracy on the part of this Board of Selectmen to keep the same people in a position on a commission. If it has, then we've got to go back through 29 years, 19 selectmen who have all been part of the same conspiracy. Because there, from what I can see in the record, there's no record that people have been pushed off the position because their two terms have expired.
Yes, Mike.
I, I'm going to just go with a couple of assumptions here. I'm going to assume that there is no term limits on selectmen. If you like the job, you can get elected again, and you'll selectmen till the day you die. I'm going to also assume that there's no term limits on zoning boards, planning boards, sanitary trustees. I don't see anything else that I can remember, going back through some of these reports, I don't see anything else in the town that has term limits to it. And I think it just makes sense to clean the mess up by not having term limits for people on the historic. If the only prerequisite is if you be a dinosaur, want to be on the historic commission, that's fine. But I don't remember, I'm hearing what Betty said about, I don't remember being asked, it's not been a situation where we've gone around and asked people to do anything in the town. Generally, it's people that want to roll up their sleeves and step forward and put yourself into the breach. And once you learn how a board operates and you become trained, some of the positions, you have to send people away to workshops and things to get them up to speed on how some of these things work, maybe it's not in our negative interest to let those people go. I mean, maybe they need to stay on until we get our training dollars back out of them over a period of years. I don't see a problem with this. If the appointment, the appointment process needs to be cleaned up by putting it into the hands of the selectmen, then fine, unless the people like to sit on it, go over to the selectmen, be concerned, be considered for appointment for the jobs. Then that complaint can go away. But I, this is just nuts and bolts. It's what we call a boilerplate. It's cleaning up a situation that needs to be--
Housekeeping, housekeeping, Mike.
Housekeep.
Diana.
Huh?
Diana.
Diana?
Oh.
This particular year of voting has been brutal. But, as the outcome has shown, it's time to make changes. It's time to move forward. And with any position, there's always been transitions in workforce. It's always been where the new employee, shall we say, can kind of guide or be guided by the older one, the one who is phasing themselves out. And I just feel like this might be a year for changes in everything. And then maybe some of our residents might feel, "Well, gee, there is something I can do." It's not going on as it always has. It might be time to put our feet in and say, "Gee, maybe I enjoy doing that." And it's just a new year, a new time for our town. It doesn't mean we want to change everything. It just means we want to move on. We don't want to step in.
I have an amendment that comes out of my concern that this is a land use body. No matter what this body does, there are going to be people who disagree with them, just like they disagree with the planning board and the exception board. No matter how well their intent is, you know, some of us are going to be unhappy. That's just kind of, we have to make those tough decisions. You get put on that. So, my amendment says that I agree with one. On two, I would change the method of member appointment to election in staggered two-year terms. And three, provide for two alternative members, alternate members of the commission to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. This brings us closer to what we do to the planning board. It allows for that natural turnover that one hopes will occur in any land use group. And it provides some protection, I think, for the people who are on this board. I agree, term limits can eliminate your very best people. I mean, that's silly, the most knowledgeable people. But at the same time, when there is contention, those things need to come forth, particularly when you're talking about land use. So, my amendment again would read, you want to read it?
No, you can read it.
Okay. With the amendment, it would be to amend number two, to change the method of member appointment to election in staggered two-year terms. Three, to provide for up to two alternate members of the commission to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
We need a second for that amendment. Second it over there. And, okay, he seconded.
She's asking to make a friendly amendment.
Just, could we change it to three because that coincides with the planning board and the other, the three-year terms?
I have no problem with that, sir. I'm thinking.
All right. Bill?
Does this historic, you know, originally, there were seven people. There were five coming at town meeting, plus one from the selectmen, plus one from the planning board. Is your intention to maintain it?
Bill, not to interrupt you, I think I was just going to tell you this, that there's amendment on the floor.
Excuse me.
And that we have to direct our attention to that amendment, whether it passes or not, and then we could go back. He was just about to tell you that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we're going to vote on the amendment.
I'm looking at it now, are you? I'm looking at it now.
Amendment to Article 5, Section 2, change the method of members' appointment to be elect in staggered two-year terms.
Three, three.
It changes to three.
Oh, it changes to three?
Yeah, it's supposed to be a three.
Oh, three.
I did it wrong, I started.
Okay. And in the section three, provide for, which, oh, three.
Yeah.
Two.
Provide for two alternate members.
Two alternate members, yeah.
Before we do that, effective when? We just had an election, nobody's been elected.
Right.
In fact, this is the way it looks to me, this is the way it looks for next year.
Yeah.
I need a second.
You're saying be an effective date.
Yeah. To take--
Yeah, Bill's seconding it.
We'll have an election next year.
He's seconding it.
Yes.
All right. All in favor of amendments? Has it just read?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, amendment passes. All right, any more discussion? Bill?
So, getting back to the 1981, is it the intention that there would be these five selected members plus a representative to the Board of Selectmen, plus a representative to the planning?
That is right.
That becomes a jungle we're not through sometimes.
Any more discussion?
Yeah. Oh, good.
I'd like to offer a second amendment. Amendment to amend, and I'm in the process of writing it up, to amend Article 2, or Act 2 as amended, to read and to allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint five interim members to serve until the next town election.
Very good.
Yeah, all right.
I'd like to second Brian's amendment.
I will.
You will?
Brian, can I make a friendly amendment?
It's so friendly today.
Five years plus two alternate. I mean, the two alternate are already counted on the three.
Yeah, that's always covered.
Two alternate, maybe by the month of the third.
Until next year.
I don't know where I'm at.
Brian, which one is on amendment 2?
I'd just like to make a comment while Brian's writing out his amendment. The comment would be, does that leave us with how many more blank spaces on the paper ballot for next year's election like we had all the blank spaces on this year's ballot from all the people who want to fill up all these boards? That was my comment.
Good comment.
That was so good.
I would think after, I would think after this election, there won't be too many blanks on that ballot.
We do have going out on the inventories, Mike, as you probably know, the quest for people to fill--
Where the heck do I add this?
This goes into, he's changing this one.
Yeah.
Want me to do it for you?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
All right.
Amendment to Article--
I have to wait for Brian's--
That's it?
Oh, that's Brian's?
Yeah.
How much is running now?
Oh, it is right now.
Oh, no.
All right. There's an amendment to Section 2 to allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint five interim members to serve until the next generation, that's general election. The next generation, wow. All right. All in favor?
Other questions?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Oh, gee. Where am I? All right, go back. Any more discussion on?
Just on the question, going back to the Article 8, we're to make five interim appointments. If, I'm asking you to give us permission to ask people to, who would like to serve on the commission. The inventories are going out with requests for different other people to volunteer if they're willing, for other commissions also. I would like you to give us permission to make these five appointments at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting so we have an opportunity to review who wants it. And I want to bring to your attention, the original warrant in 1981 does say that we're supposed to do it at this town meeting.
But you've just changed--
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just bringing it out. I just want you to know that. So, I would like your permission, I don't know if we should--
Exactly.
Excuse me?
You did. You already did.
Well, it doesn't say when. And I want, I want you to know, we're going to, I want you--
The market says--
Okay. But I want yous to know, we're going to do it at the next selectmen's meeting.
Good.
Okay?
Okay. Bill?
Question, in the town report, page 14, under Historic District Commission, there are five alternate members? Everybody's listed involved. When were they appointed?
Why are they listed involved?
John's flipping a lot of pages here. He's going to let me play this one. I'm going to take, I'm just going to take two more, two moments of your time to go quick back in history and bring us through today. Round knight, and correct me, what can speak. On about 1978, there were a group of people in town that had the vision to create, to see an area in town that they wanted to preserve. Had a great historical nature, and it was a big part of the town of Dorchester. They were way ahead of the curve. They established a historic district. They did everything by the numbers that the law allowed them to do. They added term limits, and they added no compensation. Totally legal. In 1983, there was a question of were RSAs changed? No RSA was ever changed by the state of New Hampshire in regards to historic districts. What happened in 1983? The New Hampshire legislature recodified. They repealed the sections. They changed--
It was August 15, 1981.
August 15, 1981. Went into the chapter in 1983. The, all they did there was change the numbers on the sections of the laws. That's all they did. Term limits are not illegal. As they moved forward, the town, the warrant said, "Look, fellas, we want somebody from the planning board, we want somebody from the selectmen's, and we want you selectmen to pick five people to be on this board. But we're telling you, when you first do it, stagger their terms, three years-- But we're telling you, when you first do it, stagger their terms, three years, two years, one years, and every time you come to a town meeting, reappoint somebody else. If you look back at history of appointments through the town reports, they did, they were doing well in the eighties, and they were doing well in the nineties. The glitch to it is Bob Pond, who was a resident of the district, has been on it since forever. It's folly because he was a resident. So we started going astray a little bit. When we got to the year 2000, our present Historical District Commission, with all the best intent to retain the quality of this historic district, there's no record of appointments, there's no record of, of abiding by the warrant article that our town put together in 1980. It was violated, that's the bottom line, we didn't follow the rules. And for whatever reason we didn't follow the rules, it's of no one's fault, today's today. The point that came to, where it takes us today with putting this commission together...
And where was the point you wanted me to?
Why are they, why are they alternates?
Oh, okay, I knew Bill wanted to know something.
Now, Artie, now.
Bill, I had to do that, didn't I? Okay, the question, the question of, the question of alternates came in, is that we were faced, the Board of Selectmen were faced, it was brought to our attention, that, look, there's term limits, the town did it correctly, we're not abiding by the warrant article. And the fact of the matter is, when that was brought to our attention, it's absolutely correct, we were violating the warrant article. It's a very serious thing, when the town tells somebody to do something and you don't do it, that's not good, that's bad. We said, okay, look, commission, you're not a commission, you're out. It was difficult to tell these, that commission that, because we knew the spirit, what they had, what they were trying to preserve in the town. We went astray. There's been a conflict between, I want, I want to keep this, and maybe this person doesn't, and we got Flatlanders, and we got natives, and we got this, and we got that. Can I tell you, that's all a crock. I don't think there's anybody in this room that moved into Dorchester, doesn't want this area to be pristine, maintained, and brought up to the quality we want. I don't think anybody that chose to move into Dorchester, to live here the rest of our lives, wants this to change. But we want to be able to pay our taxes, and that's, that's the trust of it. So the answer to the alternate was, came up with a brainstorm, looking through the RSAs, and it was done totally out of respect for the commission that I'd been working on for ten years. It was RSA to talk about alternates. I broached that idea, and we made the girl, we made the commission alternates. With the caveat in the back of our heads, that we knew that if they took any legal action, the town would then be in trouble. We stopped. There was going to be hearings, there was going to be that, and it was very conflicting to the members of the commission, because their heart and soul is in, in to the historic district. They want it pristine, and they want it maintained. That was our conflict. And to be very honest with you, it was a weakness not to hurt their feelings, to keep them interested in the historic district in the town of Dorchester. That's why we appointed alternates. It turns out, the legal battles, I know more about historic district law, case law, looking at both sides, I have to tell you, it wasn't a battle of the laws, everything is perfectly legal, the battle is we violated our warrant article. And the battle is, we all agreed to make this pristine. The fact is, the members on the commission had to be taken off, and they will be replaced. And I hope this, what we decide today, is the right avenue to take. But it's going to be up to you to put your name on the ballot and contribute. That was our mindset. That's how alternates came, Bill, it was to try to keep the commissioning, because the commission did a lot of work in coming up with revisions, where the problem really came in, and I'll lay it out there to you, is David, and I can say this, David, David and I were under the impression that months ago, it's got to be six or eight months ago, that this historic district ordinance was sent to the Upper Valley, Upper Centipede Valley Planning Board, Commission, or whatever that is.
Regional planning.
Regional planning, thank you, John. And they oversee, and gave, do a lot of work for us in setting us in the right path. They are the ones that helped us write our hazard litigation, they have information now from our Planning Board to update our language, terms, definitions. David and I thought this was happening. Apparently, there was a lack of communication between the commission, Centipede, and David and I. That drew a conflict. It drew such a conflict that it came to the point, and I had mentioned this to people that cared about the district, I had so disappointed in myself for even thinking of putting this article on the, on the warrant. If somebody wanted it, they should have petitioned it, because the town did nothing wrong in 1980. We have the, the decisions that are made here now, we're going to uphold what the people did, our town did, sitting right here in 1980, with the true spirit of keeping this pristine, and, and the interest of preservation, teaching people, and rotating people, and getting their hearts into historic values. The historic society is trying to do, do records, but there's a couple of girls doing it. The Grange is trying to get things done, but there's a couple of people doing it. Now we're dealing with the historic district, there's a couple of people doing it. The problem we have is a couple of people can't do all this. So I hope when we approve this, I expressed to you, David and I's dissatisfaction in the last minute of putting this article before you, but I think something good's coming out of it. The message is that we need help. We need intelligent people giving us your input so we can make intelligent decisions. Had I, would I have made the same decision, had the learning about everything was legal? No, probably wouldn't be talking about this article today. The 1980s would have upheld.
Bill?
Bill, go ahead.
Not, not to further confuse your party, there's nothing in that original warrant in 1981 mentioning alternates to this committee.
And the, and the alternates were added, in the New Hampshire Preservation Guidelines to Historical Districts, it mentions, it cites some of the RSAs, but it also mentions having alternates. And the purpose of the alternates was that the commission that was in place was to recruit people from town to be alternates, that's, that's the point.
Well, I understand that, but was that ever made as a warrant?
No, was not. No, it was not.
So these, so the, you know, I mean, get, again, acted incorrectly.
Yes.
Because you do not have the authority to appoint alternates.
And after we...
Which is not saying anything against the commission.
You're absolutely right, John wants to say, sorry.
Bill, what, what wrong have been done, or omissions by the board, or whatever, and time, things got lost, some things have lost, stolen, strayed. Everyone had good intent to what they were doing, and, but, that's, and then, and the legislature fortunately did upgrade things in six seventy-three, colon, six seventy-three, colon, four, where it will call for alternates. They did this back in 1981. The fact of the matter is, that people were looking, people were drawing, working on assumptions, I think, from what happened in 1981, it's what happened in the law, very similar to what happened to, with people in De Akers. We, the town and De Akers had some conflicts, but then it was modified by a law regarding advert tourism. If you were on top of that, let's say if none of us were on top of that, and all of a sudden, whoops, the legislature fixed it for us. Well, now we know the legislature fixed it, but somehow there was a void in the radar. And I think, now we're living with the law.
I think Darlene, you had your hand up.
Well, I just want to make a personal statement, I feel like my intelligence has been insulted. When this was brought to our attention, that we weren't in compliance, I had no objection to it, it was brought to our attention, we needed to address it. And it just has really gotten blown out of proportion, and I regret that, because it causes contention everywhere. And I just wanted, state where I'm coming from, I don't have a problem with the commission, I know how hard we've worked, and I don't have a problem with having its ordinances enforced, that's what they're for, and I'm glad this was brought to light. And as with any committee, this should be how it's dealt with. But it was not handled very well, and I think a lot of people have been offended, and let's hope we can go forward from here with more open minds and forthrightness amongst everyone. Thanks.
We saw her hand over here, him next, and then you, Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, we've all been violated, and I think we love each other with what's going on.
I just wanted to address Bill's question about the alternates, the alternates are not mentioned in that original warrant article, but they are in the RSAs, so I don't think the point of alternates was in any way legal.
It didn't say you couldn't appoint alternates.
Exactly.
As, as part of the land use regulations, and it is, as Artie said, it is a land use board, it falls under the land board, which does allow, the original article didn't say you couldn't have our alternates, these others did.
Josh?
Yeah, my question is, we're sort of admitting that, you know, mistakes have been made along the way, how does that affect prior decisions that have been made by the Historic Commission in relation to, well, townspeople and...
I don't, it's a good question, but it's, I think right now, there are no decisions that the commission made, I believe, that are really contentious. There were no decisions that were made, I know from when they were alternates, there may have been, but they chose not to do it for the good of the town, so there weren't any lawsuits. I don't think there's anything that the commission has, to my knowledge, anyway, that the commission has done in, in awarding certificates, what's the correct terminology, Pat? Certificates, the, application for?
Application for certification of approval.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any, anything contentious about any applications that the commission has issued that would draw any, I think today is a good day to lead the community and go forward.
Right.
I have a very important question.
Second it?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Good luck, Darren.
Yeah, I can hope I can get this right. All right, Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to amend the 1981 rule that gave for the establishment of a town Historical District Commission, Article twenty-four, 1981, end of town meeting by deleting that article limit on commission members serving more than two successive years. Now, let's see where to hang this.
Two successive, two successive terms.
Change it to allow the Board of Selectmen, as amended, to allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint five interim members to serve until the next generation is elected. Let's see, I think we've got one here.
Hank meant the general election. Okay, no, it's okay, go ahead, you're doing fine.
Yeah, and, and ride for two alternate members. Did I get it right?
Yeah.
I amended the amendment, Betty Ann, that...
And that was approved.
And you can insert the piece that says that under Article Two, under Act Two, the members will be elected for three-year terms.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah, I changed to the, one-third of members appointed to elect in staggered, three-year terms, you say?
Right.
Yeah, okay, has everybody got it right?
Yeah.
I hope I have.
Artie, can you read it one more time, all the way through? Can I have the...
I don't have it, Hank's got it.
Okay, we really need to know what this is. Really, and I need to know what this is, we can get it down.
Can I call for a vote?
No.
Under Article Eight, just to recap real quick, number one, we're going to delete the article limit on a commission serving more than two successive terms, that's what it's asked to do. Number two, says that effective next election, we will have, in a town election, we will be electing our commission members for three-year terms. We will stagger the terms as directed by our warrant that says three years, two years, one years, and that will start the commission elections going.
Okay. Go ahead.
But in the, as, as the amendment that Brian made says, that it's okay that the select, selectmen go ahead and appoint five interim Historic District Commission members at the next selectmen's meeting, until the general election of 2011.
So number one remains the same, number two, correct?
Number two.
The number one stays the same.
Stays the same.
That stays the same.
Yeah.
Then Betty's would come next.
Yes.
Number two would be to change the method of member appointment to election in staggered three-year terms.
Yeah.
And to allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint five interim members to serve until the next general election.
Correct.
Then number three would be to provide for...
Two.
Two alternate members.
Yes, appointed by the select.
Appointed by the select.
Okay?
All right, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
As amended? All opposed? Okay.
Good job, Hank.
Yeah.
Good job. That was a tough one.
Yeah.
Bill? Bill?
I have a question.
I'd like that, too.
I think our best direction to pass, in the original description, the historic district was in a circle of 550 acres, and on page fifty-eight, was a summon, probably in the...
This is what's been set in on the National Register, what's on the book on page fifty-eight, only that part of the district itself has been accepted on the National Register.
Great question.
Yes.
I have an announcement, there was a spaghetti dinner and benefit concert planned this evening for Bill Loyans, whose house burned out on 118, and that's been canceled. As soon as we know and it's rescheduled, I'll try to let people know, Dorchester notes. If you want to get Dorchester notes, if you will give me your email address, I'll be happy to add you to that list. My second is a question to the...
Would I, Betty, would I?
Oh, there you go.
I'm really sort of waiting.
Oh, you don't have a budget?
Make those articles ten, you can bring those up.
Do you see how polite we were?
Yes.
All right.
We'll let you say that again in a few minutes.
Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $430,028.80 to the Frey Town charges. Did I read that right? Four hundred thirty thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, move forward.
Would we accept the, would we accept Article Eight?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine, yeah, yeah.
I'll second it.
You seconded it, yeah, you put it on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, open for discussion.
As I said earlier, we pared this budget down to be zero-based for here in town. We're hoping that we can do this again next year, but we can't make any promises. We have other forces that are facing us next year. It's not going to affect us to 2012, but we've taken pains to make this budget work for us here in town this year. But we are looking at what our legislature has done to three towns here in the Massacre School District, Grafton, Dorchester, and Canaan, that substantially had their adequate education aid funding cut significantly. I think, Brian, you calculated enough to be close to 33 percent difference. They've taken away from Dorchester nearly $136,000. And if you can figure out, on the tax rate, it would take $40,000 to raise a tax rate a dollar. So, you know, our moving target is revenues, if our revenues come in good, we'll be fine. If our revenues come in good, we'll be fine. If our revenues slip, it's not going to be a pretty picture. The town has taken efforts to keep our budget restrained. And we just hope that the other sectors, the other sectors are working to do the same. Cookie's on the school board, and she's working at that also. And Grafton County, I advise all of you to stay tuned to Grafton County budget because they join up on a, on each year nearly eight percent. So, the three sectors that affect our tax rate, town, school, and county, we need to stay on top of all these. So, there's a school board meeting up here in town in September, or is it October this year?
September.
Yeah. When I've come here in the past, I think I've seen probably no more than five people on my hand here at that meeting. I advise many of you to come here because that's the place where we need to give input, and they need to hear it too. A lot of you in here are giving us input here at town meeting, and we've taken it. And we've tried to reflect it by doing a budget for you, which is level-based. And I urge just about being asked.
I'd like to commend the selectmen for the budget hearing that they held. It was very useful for those who came and sat and listened to the various committees and groups going over their budgets. As a cemetery committee chair, I had an opportunity to talk with them about what we were finding in our costs and expenses, and that is reflected in the budget. Again, I would repeat what John said, is that there were very few people there, and that is your opportunity to influence the budget. You should know by sitting in those budget hearings for our town what's happening. However, I would also like to urge that we do a better job of communicating with our citizens when these hearings occur. It is still, it just doesn't work to post it here and post it at the town office and expect people to stop there. We've got to find other means of communication so that people actually know when things are heard.
How many people sitting in here have personal computers at home? Okay. Town of Dorchester, if you, I don't know if any of us have it, but we have townofdorchester.net, right, Linda? Townofdorchester.net.
Oh. Yes, I think that's...
Townofdorchester dot earthlink.net.
I just slipped the stuff off, that's my...
Townofdorchester.net, and then, and we have a website. And in that website, we are publishing, we are publishing what information we have.
I think we're gurkling off on the subject. We still haven't voted on Article nine.
Let's get Article nine.
So...
Good job, Hank.
Anybody that need more discussion on Article nine?
I do. Okay.
Mike?
Who's the question?
Who's the question? All in favor?
Second.
Would you do the other second? Yeah, okay, Brian's second. All in favor of Article nine? I'll read it first. To see if the town will vote to raise and appoint the sum of four hundred thirty thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents due to fray town charges. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. All right. Article ten, to act upon any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Anybody got anything to say? Anybody got anything to say?
Andy.
Any help?
Andy, yeah?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the effort that the salary benefits committee did. It's a great document, and you use, like Betty said, to meet the need and help. Thank you, Linda, and our founding people.
Well, you're going to start it.
Josh.
You just failed by us, Andy.
It's a good document, it's going to be useful, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
So is this the end of the meeting?
No.
Not yet.
This is all a nicety for Josh.
A niceties, okay. Well, thanks, everyone, for participating, and I'm the elected moderator. I hope that the future meetings are as amicable as this one was, with a lot of laughter and positivity. I think that's what we need to work for. As the town moderator, I'd also make myself available for some of these issues that seem to be coming up, that there's divisions in our town. And so, I publicly announce that if, if I can be of any service in facilitating or moderating groups that are in disagreement, then I would accept that role. Another point that I'd like to make, as far as this volunteering for positions, and, you know, everybody has the best intention and so forth around here. Three or four years ago, I volunteered for the solid waste commission, and I've been attending meetings pretty regularly, probably eighty percent, ninety percent of the meetings. I learned a lot about regional solid waste issues, and what people get for recyclables, where it goes, you know, the regional plans that are going on. There's a new dump they're planning in Lebanon, and there's the one in Bethlehem that's going to close in a couple of years. There's big issues that I've been educated about by attending these meetings. And a couple of years ago, there was grumblings about Dorchester starting a transfer station. So, I didn't hear about it directly, but approached the selectmen and asked, you know, what's going on? And more or less, it told me nothing, nothing going on. Now, I read in the town report that there is stuff going on. I have two questions, what's going on? And where's the compactor that we bought a couple of years ago? Those are my two questions, and I guess I would direct those questions to Mr. Franz as the chairman.
I'll go first, or you can... We have talked about creating a transfer station. We do have a compactor, which is presently at the highway garage, they've set it off to the side. Our thinking was, when we could sell some property or get some revenues in town, perhaps we could save the town some money, which costs us around twenty-six thousand and change a year. And we thought if we could do it for the same cost or a little bit less, maybe we could do something on our own for once, instead of contracting, you know, through another town. Does that answer your question, or not really?
I think it does.
We're in the process. I mean, there's nothing set in stone, but we do have the compactor, and hasn't cost us a cent. So, it's there, that's one step in the right direction.
Well, my, my point being is, I have been going out into the community as a representative of Dorchester, spending a good deal of time going out and educating myself about these issues. And I haven't been consulted in any way, shape, or form. So, if, if you're, you want citizens to be empowered to participate, but you're not seeking their consultation, I'm not sure that's effective governance.
I don't think it's going to happen today or tomorrow, Josh. I think it's probably three to five years down the road.
Three to five years? The situation, the situation with solid waste in this region is pretty, there's some long-term planning to be done around it. As to where we can go as an independent and not as a collective organization, like you're saying, doing it ourselves, from my experience and what I've heard about with other towns that have been trapped into that, trapped into not having a contract, and sort of dealing with waste management on an individual basis, it has not been to their economic benefit.
I think they'd put the trash removal and trucking out to bid, whoever would do it the most efficiently.
Oh, absolutely. What I'm saying is, right, right now, we're affiliated with a collective of seventeen communities that negotiate collectively, to have long-term contracts. And unless you have that ability, if you're negotiating on a yearly basis, sending stuff out to bid, you are going to pay economically a higher price.
Oh, definitely. And I deal with approximately eight transfer stations myself on a personal level, and probably half of them do it on a yearly basis, putting it out to bid through Northeast, Tim Lewis, several small Witchers, Hammond's. So, you're going to get more of a competitive price doing it that way, and a cheaper price for the town, versus putting it out for a five-year contract and getting stopped.
Once again, based on my experience with the commission, and a couple of years attending the meetings, I would say it would behoove the selectmen to hear the point of the commission.
Before we even move forward, Josh, on doing anything...
You've already moved forward, you've already bought a compactor.
We'll be, we'll be working with everyone in town to make sure...
You've already moved forward, let's just clarify that. You have purchased something with taxpayers' dollars with the intention of setting something up. So, I feel like, and, you know, we can bounce this off the public, but I can feel you have moved forward. And I'm saying you haven't consulted citizen volunteers who have, you know, been educated about this, and that's my only point. And I don't intend to say much more on the subject.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen be directed to form a feasibility committee as to the feasibility of a transfer station in the town of Dorchester, and to report back to the town at the next annual meeting.
If I could, I would like to be considered for inclusion.
Somebody got a second?
No?
Motion.
Really, a second?
Yeah.
Oh, Bill's seconded, all right. Well, all right. Josh, I mean...
On the question.
Huh?
On the question.
Anybody?
Yeah, I, I, it, it sounds to me, now, I sat on the solid waste district commission, I was appointed by the select board, and so this discussion basically is germane to Mr. Tront and the select board. If you do not like the interplay, then the interplay needs to go on in the selectman's forum, not here. It gives me that way.
Town business.
It is town business, but this is an appointment of someone who is supposed to represent the town, and, and the report should go back through this selectman, after what's going on at that level, and what this selectman would like to do in conjunction with the commission that we paid the owner.
I, I understand that, and I made the motion, I made the motion in effect, have a feasibility study done. If, in fact, we did buy a compactor in the past, apparently we did, if the issue of a transfer station is, is questioned, then we have talked about it in an effort to save money. But they got to be pros and cons to it, and I'd like to create a committee to go out and get those pros and cons, bring them to the selectman, and then, if it's going to even be an audit, we'll put on the warrant for next year. But I'd like, I'd like us to research it, research the issue and get the pros and cons, so you can be given an intelligent presentation. That's the purpose of it.
Go ahead.
Just, Josh apparently has been appointed, our volunteers go on, you know, get all the information that's served, served the town.
Yeah.
Why do we need to appoint a commission to look at things? He's gone on behalf of the town and gotten all the information. Shouldn't he be sitting down with the selectmen, and you guys picking his brain to get information before, instead of appointing a new commission and starting all over again? I, I don't understand why.
I, I brought it up, and I agree with you, that if it's under Josh, it's probably, but he apparently does, feels like he wasn't in the loop, if you will, about what we talked about.
Just bring it up.
I will, I will withdraw my motion, but I will, but as selectmen, we will pursue the fact of feasibility study through the conservation commission, and if any moves are made to buy, to start a transfer station, it will be done at the word of the town. And that's my point. The town's going to decide if we're going to have a transfer station.
Any more discussion about anything?
First of all, doesn't the second have to be moved through? I think the person who made the second... This is friendly, and I'll probably see the thunder from the selectmen, but as a citizen, I would love to thank Linda Landry, Dorothy Oakes, and Cookie Heaver for setting up the refreshments.
Oh, yeah.
Coffee. And please eat, don't wait before you eat.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to put my two cents in. I think you're doing all the job, and I think you all need to get out and push and work and put this town on its feet.
Who is that?
For helping us out. We're old people now.
Not yet.
Hey, hey, to help this out, we were freezing today.
Well, this is that part of the meeting where you do all the warm updates. And we'd like to present a few things, as, as, Michael has left, but we'd like to express our appreciation to Michael Howe for his devoted and invaluable time to the Dorchester Planning Board. I presented to his father, Brian, so he can forward it to Michael.
And they broke the glass, Brian, when they were signing it. I have replacement glass boards.
So, that'll be a real pain for him to work.
Yeah.
Secondly, I'd like to, we'd like to have a certificate of appreciation to Carol Moad. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, for her invaluable service as supervisor of the checklist.
Tront on up, man.
David, you're not for God. David came to, came on the board six years ago. He has been a great person to work with. He and I would exchange information all the time, back and forth, many, many times, you know, not making decisions, but just trying to get ideas, impact them, and make workable for this community. He's a very knowledgeable in the business sector, and has been very helpful in providing information if and when we decide to do anything with a transfer station. He will stay in this loop if we do decide to go this route. But of course, as we said, we would have other people involved if we're going to take this direction. But in the meantime, we'd like to present this to you, David, for two terms of the Board of Selectmen, and a good job.
Well, I want to thank everybody for this thing here. Really probably should owe you people for having me in for six years. A lot more to just being at the select board meeting, signing checks, there's a lot of grief, a lot of stress. I wanted to throw in the towel a couple of times, and these guys said, no, stay on, you can make it. And as I say, I would urge other people to sign up for the position, that way you can kind of reflect what these guys go through. And I don't know why they, why they do it, but here they are. I mean, it's the big money we pay them. And Mike Landry knows, Brian knows, it's a tough job. I don't know, someday maybe I'll try it again, but I think it's time to move on, do something different, and I think it'll be a little less stressful. I appreciate working with the board, and Brian, and Linda, and the checklist people, it's, they've all been real nice to me. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Huh? All right. I think, anybody going to move to join them?
Don't move.
Seconded, and all right, don't forget, you people that have just been elected, come up and get, take the oath of office. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back.